Okay, so let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Children's Trust of Alachua County to order. I guess we need to take attendance roll first.
Yeah, I'm gonna read a little disclaimer here, so give me just a minute. If you're listening or watching the meeting through the webinar format, please raise your hand function. If you want to speak, simply click on participant icon in the Zoom toolbar and look for the Raise Your Hand button on the bottom right-hand side of the screen. Those of you viewing the meeting through the webinar may also comment via the chat function. If you are watching via Facebook Live and would like to comment, please call the number at 1-346-248-7799 and use meeting ID 842-862-2170. And Ashley will put on the screen the information with the phone number. If you would like to follow along with the agenda and backup, please go to www.childrentstrustofalachua county.us and click on About, then Meetings, and you'll find the document under today's date.
Hi.
Roll call.
Ashley just sent me the Chair's agenda, so I can actually do that, so.
We're on the roll call.
We're on roll call. Member Certain. Tina's here. Member Clark.
I'm here.
Member Cole Smith.
I'm here.
Member Cornell. Doesn't look like Ken is here. Member Hart.
Here.
I am here, Labarta. I saw Dr. Snyder.
Here.
The member Snyder's here. Member Twombly. Is Cheryl with us?
Yes, I'm here.
And then Susan Bullard is here. And we're missing Lee Pincusson. Okay. We now have an agenda, review, revision, and approval item. The approval of the agenda also approves all of the items on the consent agenda. Are there any revisions to the consent agenda?
Yes, actually, I have one. We're gonna pull, we're gonna pull one of the items off there, the Aces in Motion item, under the, under the third item. So we don't, it doesn't need any further discussion, it just needs to be pulled off.
Okay. Any other change to that, anything else anyone wants to have pulled off? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as modified. Okay, guys, I'm still moved. Okay, we have. Who seconded?
Carol.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do I have to ask for public input on this one, too? I think so, yes?
It wouldn't hurt.
Is there any public discussion on the agenda, on the motion to approve the agenda with the one modification? And I can't see that, so Colin, I'm gonna rely on you.
I don't see any, no.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, bringing it back to the board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And then we have a presentation, public meetings after November 1.
Yes, and thank you. And Dr. Labarta, I'm gonna introduce Stephanie Marshman with Gray Robinson, just to bring everyone up to speed. At the last meeting, we were discussing how to conduct our meetings post-November 1, once the governor's executive order expired. And the conversation went a few different directions. There was some confusion because different bodies have been able to do different things with their public meetings. And so I asked Ms. Marshman for kind of a second opinion. She wrote a response to several questions that I had. And so what I asked her to do today is come here and just go over her memo. And then, following that, we have some recommendations to adopt as policy in the action item section. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Marshman.
Very much. Good morning, everybody. Good to see you. I'll just walk through my memorandum that I prepared for Mr. Murphy and the Children's Trust. The questions were really related to what was required in terms of board members' participation at the meetings post-November 1, and then what was required with regards to the public's participation in board meetings. At the outset, I just wanna note, because Mr. Murphy brought up how some local governments are handling meetings differently after November 1. In terms of the Children's Trust, you are a special district. What that means is that your authority and your power is limited to what's provided in your enabling legislation. You are different than a city or a county which has broad home rule authority. Cities and counties can act under their home rule authority in any manner that protects or promotes public health, welfare, and safety. So I think that's a big distinction between special districts and other types of local governments. So just keep that in mind if you're seeing other local governments act differently. So with respect to you all as a special district, Mr. Murphy posed the question, do board members need to be physically present after November 1 for your board meetings? And the answer is yes. Beginning November 1, at least six board members must be physically present. The bylaws define a quorum as the presence of a majority of all members serving on the trust. So you have 10 members, so at least six of you need to be physically present. And this is in accordance with a number of attorney general opinions that have been issued. If a board member is not physically present, can they still be counted as present for a quorum if participating virtually? And the answer is no, he or she cannot be counted as present for purposes of establishing a quorum. The next question was, if a board member is not physically present, can they still participate even if not counted toward the quorum? And the answer is yes. If a quorum of the board is physically present, the Attorney General has opined that a board may determine that there is, quote, "an extraordinary circumstance that allows a board member to participate by electronic means." If the board makes such a finding, then the board member or members that are attending the board meeting may teleconference or use other technological means to participate in board discussions and vote on trust business. So we've provided, and it's included in the policy that we drafted, a manner in which you all may allow this to occur. So if you have board members that are in an extraordinary circumstance, and I would submit that those of you who may be particularly susceptible to COVID-19 or have other extraordinary reasons why you wouldn't want to be physically present, that the board chair simply read a script at the beginning of the meeting, saying something like, "In light of COVID-19, board member," insert their name, "have requested to participate in the board meeting remotely. In the wake of this unprecedented pandemic, the board deems this an extraordinary circumstance. Therefore, I make a motion to allow whatever the board member's name is to participate remotely in the meeting." So the following question is, if a board member is not physically present, can they vote? The answer is yes, under the circumstances we just described. So if there's an extraordinary circumstance and you have a board member that's participating remotely, that board member can vote. If a board member's not physically present, can they still be counted as present for attendance purposes to meet the attendance requirements for the bylaws? The answer is yes, if they're participating under the circumstance that we just discussed. In terms of public participation, there were questions about whether the public should have an opportunity to attend the meetings physically or in person. And the answer to that is yes. You have some, as a special district, there are two statutes in particular that suggest that the public needs to, has the right to participate in your meetings in person. One deals with a board or commission being prohibited from holding meetings in any facility or location, which discriminates on the basis of sex, age, race, and other protected characteristics, and operates in a manner so as to unreasonably restrict public access to such a facility. And then there's a second statute dealing with special districts that says, "Meetings of the governing body of the special district shall be held in a public building when available within the district, in a county courthouse, or in a building in the county accessible to the public." So we think those two statutes strongly suggest that the public has the right to attend in person. Is it legal to allow the public to participate in public meetings only through phones, Zoom, or some other digital process? We think probably not. Based on these two statutes, we recommend that the public be given enough option to attend meetings electronically as well as in person. Mr. Murphy also asked about violations, sunshine law violations, and the consequences for sunshine law violations. There are jail time and fines for a knowing violation of the sunshine law, which is a misdemeanor of the second degree. There's attorney's fees. Attorney's fees may be assessed against individual members of the board, except in those cases where the board saw it and took the advice of an attorney. Other consequences include removal from office, and of course, any action of the board taken at a meeting where there was found to be a sunshine law violation would be considered void. One other question that came up since we issued our memo was a meeting, I understand that you all are planning to have a joint meeting with the City of Gainesville next week, and I understand that meeting is to be conducted virtually. And speaking with the city attorney, they are meeting virtually under an informal Attorney General advisory opinion, which, which does say that local governments can meet virtually in workshop format so long as no decision is made or no action is taken at that meeting. So given this informal advisory opinion, I believe the trust can likewise meet virtually for a workshop so long as no decision or formal action of this group is made at that meeting. So happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions from anyone? Tina?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I want to make clear that, be clear about this. I understand Ms. Marshman or Attorney Marshman to say that the public could participate virtually or in person, electronically or in person. And that is after the expiration of the order. Is that after the expiration of the order, we can continue to allow the public input or participation in a virtual format? Is that what this proposal is saying?
They have to be given the option to participate in person. You can also allow them to participate electronically.
Any other?
I actually have a question. Since, Stephanie, since part of this is based upon the bylaws, which are basically a statement of board policy, to what extent would your opinion change if the definition of presence was changed?
Gosh, I don't know that it would change, given the Attorney General opinions on the sunshine law and presence. But I'd have to look, Bob, to see if that would, would change anything in terms of the bylaws.
And as far as the quorum being present, that is based wholly upon opinions of the Attorney General.
Correct.
Other questions from anyone?
I have a question, Maggie. When we spoke at our last meeting about different options, one of the discussion points had to do with the public being present but not physically present in the same room. So I'd like to have clarification about what present, public and present means. I think it would be helpful for us in terms of additional discussion.
Yeah, so my opinion is that the public, given the statutory language, that the public needs to be able to have the option to attend your meetings in person. And I would suggest, given the circumstances, that we also allow them to participate electronically. But I think the statutory language really speaks to you all meeting in a public building and the public being granted access to that building. And.
The building or to that room?
Building. I think what Pat's getting at is the building, do they have to be in the same room? Or can they be in the same building but in a separate space within that building? I think, Pat, that was your question, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think that a reasonable reading of the statute is that they, the idea is that they be able to attend the meetings in person, not be in a separate space. I mean, that would completely defeat the purpose of the language.
So does that, could that still be six feet apart? So it would limit the capacity of any room to hold a large number of participants who wanted to attend in person?
Of course. I would obviously recommend that the meetings be conducted in such a way so that we're following CDC guidance with respect to facial coverings and social distancing. So I think to the extent you're selecting a meeting location, I would be cognizant of that and select a location where you would be able to accomplish social distancing with the number of board members and members of the public who intend to participate. You might look at, you know, the number of members of public who typically attend your meetings and select a room in that manner.
Other questions? Anyone else?
I do have a question. Karen Cole Smith. Are there any specific documents that the board member has to produce for emergency situations, or will just a statement suffice in terms of, "It's an emergency, I am not able to attend"?
There are no particular documents that need to be used.
Just a statement alone?
I think that, just with respect to, you know, a little more detail with respect to why there is an extraordinary circumstance, you know, is it because of the pandemic? Is it because of a condition? The Attorney General opinions do mention, you know, just because you, just for the sake of convenience, obviously does not amount to an extraordinary circumstance. But there is no requirement for any documentation or anything of that nature.
All right. Anything else from any member of the board?
I have one, Maggie.
Yes, Carolyn and Pat.
Would the extraordinary, like your own? In my circumstance, we take care of my elderly family. So is it, has to be my own circumstance?
Did anyone else have difficulty hearing Cheryl's question? Yeah, Cheryl.
I'm sorry.
Your audio was breaking up.
I don't, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So my question was, is, does it need to be my own circumstance if I was planning an extraordinary circumstance? Or could it be that we care for an elderly family member compromised? So it's more of a family circumstance?
Stephanie?
Hear that?
Ms. Twombly, I would be comfortable with that as an extraordinary circumstance.
Pat, I think you had another question or comment as well.
Stephanie, thank you for your helpful clarifications. I'm just also wondering if we identify a meeting space and we arrange for appropriate social distancing, as you suggested. And just under a scenario where we maybe anticipate 40 people to come and 60 show up, do we have to specify in any way that once the space reaches capacity, that individuals have the right to participate either virtually or perhaps in an alternate space located in proximity to where the actual meeting's happening through a virtual feed or anything like that?
Yeah, I think that that's a reasonable handling of that situation. And typically, in my experience with governmental meetings, there, sometimes there are circumstances where the room is full because of a popular item, and there are overflow rooms set up so that individuals can watch the meeting from the separate room and then come in and give their comments at the appropriate time, if they want to speak to the matter. That's usually how that's set up, and I would expect that that would be the same in this situation.
I thought I saw some other, another hand kind of on the screen. Did everyone get a chance to ask whatever questions they might have?
Dr. Labarta?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Ms. Marshman, the statutes give wide latitude on what a public building is. So could it be something as large as a school gym, a public school gym, or some room with a lot of space?
Yes, that sounds reasonable to me, as long as it's accessible to everybody. You know, that you, everybody can come in and out, just in terms of, I mean, the only issue I could see with a gym is potentially having to go through lock gates or something of that nature on the school property after hours. So just making sure everything's open and accessible to the public, but that sounds reasonable.
And getting back to Bob's question on the bylaws. Is there, can we change the definition of a quorum? Can we make a quorum less than half, or is that not allowed?
Yeah, that's a great question. One of my partners actually suggested that when I was talking with them about this case. I do think that that's a possibility, that changing the quorum, and I'd be interested to hear what Bob thinks about that. But I think changing the definition of a quorum to be present under your bylaws would potentially lessen the number of individuals you'd have to have physically present at the meeting. Certainly, I'm not aware of any legal restrictions on doing that. I'd have to look at that closer to see if there's anything out there related to that. But, Bob, what do you think?
Off the seat of my pants, I think you could probably do it with some provisos, depending on the nature of the business. I think for just the run-of-mill stuff that the board does, the trust does, is probably okay. But there might be certain items that you'd require to have a physical quorum present, just because of their importance.
Right. I mean, the risk that you run, Mr. Murphy, is that, let's say you change the quorum to, instead of a majority of the board, it's three people or two people. That means that those two people, say you change it to two, would be able to meet and make a decision on behalf of the trust.
Yeah. That's certainly the reason most quorums are set at a majority.
Right.
So that you can't do that. So that would be an interesting, it would be an interesting way to get around a problem, at least for the time being, but I'm not sure. Any other comments or questions? All right. So then, I think the next item for us is the resolution that is an action item that I, that was sent out. We want to put the resolution up. Do you want to read it to us, Colin? How do you want to?
I'd be happy to read it. I'm not sure. I think I should just read it.
Okay.
So I'm gonna skip the whosoever's and therefore's and just kind of read the meat. So we have board policies for the public's benefit that you can get to through our website. They're all posted and codified. And this would be our first, really, our first sections in the general administration section. So 1.10 is entitled Board Member Participation in Board and Committee Meetings. And it says that, "Meetings of the Board of Directors of the Children's Trust of Alachua County shall be open to the public and are governed by provisions of Chapter 286 Florida statutes. A majority of the board must be physically present at any meeting to constitute a quorum to transact business. Thus, if the board is 10 members, six members of the board must be physically present to transact business at a regular board meeting of the trust. These requirements also apply to committee meetings, modified as necessary to account for the number of individuals serving on the committee. If a quorum of the board is physically present, the board may determine that there is an extraordinary circumstance that allows a board member to participate by electronic means. If the board makes such a finding, then the board member or members that are attending the board meeting may teleconference or other technological means may participate in board discussions and vote on trust business. Such a finding of extraordinary circumstance may be made by a resolution of the board or simply by motion along the following lines, quote, "In light of blank, board member blank, and blank and blank, have requested to participate in the board meeting remotely. Due to blank, the board deems this extraordinary circumstance. Therefore, I make a motion to allow with the respective board members to participate remotely in this meeting." So that's Section 1.10. Actually, I changed my mind on reading the whole next thing. It is all on procedures and public comment. But I'm gonna summarize. Obviously, it says that we have to allow public comments. It incorporates everything that Ms. Marshman just, just said, referencing who must be present and by what manner they can participate virtually. It gives the board some leeway on the amount of time, although it has three minutes. If there's multiple people on the same, speaking on the same subject, then the board can, you know, has some discretion on how many people and who long. Let's see. It talks about board meeting comments, pretty much as we practice now, both at the meeting and before any meeting that has a vote. And lastly, there's some provisions in there on how to deal with audio, video, tape DVDs, or any written material that someone may want to present to the board. Ms. Marshman, did I leave anything of substance out of that section?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
So that is a resolution that this board would then be required to adopt, correct, Colin?
It would become a policy of the board.
But, but we have a resolution before us to approve that. Questions? All right. So at this point, then, we will ask for public comment. If you're listening or watching the meeting through a webinar format, remember, use the Raise Your Hand function. Simply click on the Participants icon in the Zoom toolbar and look for Raise Your Hand button on the bottom right-hand side. And if you're viewing the meeting through the webinar, you may also comment via the chat function. And if you're watching via Facebook and would like to comment, please call the call-in number 1-346-248-7799 and use the meeting ID 842-86202170. And do we have any raised hands?
Dr. Labarta, there's, I only see one raised hand. That's Dr. Hart. Member Certain has just raised her hand. Since this is the public comment time, I would just give the public just a few more, a few more seconds, and then maybe take the comments from the members, if there's a motion, when it's discussed, I think would be the right way to do it. If there's a motion when it's discussed, I think would be the right way to do it.
So any, do we see any raised hands from the other participants?
I don't, I don't see any from the, from the public at this time, no.
All right, then, I don't know who had their hand up first, but Dr. Hart, we'll go to you and then Tina?
I just had one question about the way our policy reads now, that if we're not present, we can still participate verbally and still vote. So I understand the concern about changing the quorum. And I'm not necessarily advocating a position to change the quorum, but I don't really see why two people would be able to get together and conduct business if others are participating virtually and are allowed to converse and vote. I guess I just don't have the fear that there would be any kind of mischief. You know what I'm saying? And I, you know, being the doctor in the group, I just have to say, we need to protect our health and the health of our loved ones and the health of our public. And I don't really, I don't really think it's a good idea for us to feel that six of us have to show up in order to make a place that the community can physically show up. And we could easily get to a place where we are in a pandemic and it's not safe. And if you're just watching what's happening with the pandemic, it's, the light's not going to come back out until next spring or until we have a vaccine. So I think we have to conduct our business on behalf of the taxpayer in the best way we possibly can between now and then. And I think part of the best way may be keeping ourselves from getting sick or having a super-spreader event, which would be totally humiliating.
Tina?
Thank you. I had a question on number six. Under the, it is Section Procedures, A Procedure, and then Paragraph Six. And it states that members of the public recognized by the chair will have three minutes to speak. The question that, the sentence that I have a question on is, "In the event an individual submits multiple questions to be heard on more than one agenda item, the chair shall determine the amount of time allotted to the speaker. However, such time shall not exceed 10 minutes." I guess, maybe it's not a question. My concern is I don't want the chair to limit public input on multiple items because we have had in the past, and I've been in other meetings, where there could be multiple items on an agenda that the public would want to have input on. And I don't want us, just because someone has spoke on one item, to limit participation or input on a second item. That was my, that's my first concern. And I, so I don't know if, Colin, if you want to tell us the intent of that or if this is some type of format, just a form that you downloaded from someplace else and you brought to us for us to kind of modify and entertain or what? What's the intent behind that?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't download it from anywhere. I, Ms. Marshman wrote it. I think, I think you could, if you don't like it, I would say just make a motion to take it out. I would say that the intent is to give some control over meeting times. I realize the culture in Elatcho County is you have, we have some very long meetings. So if you're not comfortable with that, I wouldn't, I mean, I think you just make a motion to take it out. And people can comment three minutes on any topic. I think it was just a suggestion or a starting point for discussion. I'm not sure the intent was really to limit anyone's time to speak. I think it was more concerned with efficiency. But, you know, I think probably if participation trumps efficiency, we just take it out.
So, so Bob has his hand up. Bob?
I'd just like to say what Stephanie has done here is take the opportunity to not only address the issue of how you're going to meet after November 1st, but to add what is our fairly standard board procedures, which you all have not had up to this point in time. You've basically been operating just a little loose. So all she's suggesting here is our standards that are pretty common among other elected boards. So this is a policy that at some point you will need to address. If it's not in this document, you will need it at some point because as this board ages, you will have situations where there will be disruptive commenters come in. Okay, and this is what standardizes how you deal with those things. So you aren't seen as acting in a particularly partial manner to people you like versus people you don't like. And you've been relatively lucky in that you haven't had any local gadflies come up and start talking about how you spend money. As you spend money, that will happen. So a process like this is necessary. And what Stephanie has presented is standard among elected boards. So there's nothing unusual in it. But it is something that y'all can, can work up however you want to. There's, it doesn't have to be this particular standard.
Any other comments? So it seems to me two issues have been raised that, Tina, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Maggie, I'm good with what Bob just said. I don't want to modify it. I just, I, my thing is that I don't, I don't, I misread that. I was, I almost thought I was, when I read it last night, it was, the chair could just not hear you after the first one. But when I just read it again, after I was asked my question, I don't want to change it. So that's what.
So then, so then the issue becomes the issue that Dr. Hart raised about quorum and whether or not we want to reduce the quorum in order to make it so that fewer board members, excuse me, fewer board members are required to be physically present. So we could, I think procedurally, we need a motion to accept the policy. And it could be a motion to accept the policy, but also reduce the quorum. Bob, is that?
I'm sorry.
Or are those two separate issues that have to be taken up separately?
They're two separate issues. The quorum is present in the bylaws. So you would, you can't.
Notice a change in bylaws before we can do that.
Better to have a meeting where it's noticed. You don't act, you actually bring it up without noticing it, but that would not be my recommendation. And that is, that is also a rather substantial change I would feel more comfortable if it is in an agenda item.
All right. And then also, I believe, Ms. Marshman, you wanted to look and see whether there was any statutory issue related to a potential reduction in quorum. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we ought to study that issue. And either I can do that or Bob can do that. But I think we ought to particularly look at and come to a legal opinion as to whether we it's legally defensible to change the quorum to two in the bylaws. I would just want to look at that before we went ahead and did it. And I agree with Bob. I think it makes sense to have a separate meeting with an amendment that where it's noticed and we have a proposed amendment to the bylaws.
Then, then with those, those comments and that input, what is before us then, what we would need is a motion to approve the resolution that would put this into our policies.
That we accept the policy that's as presented.
Have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second, this is Karen Clark.
Karen Clark, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to go ahead and do this as a roll call, vote. Tina Certain? Karen Clark?
Aye.
Karen Cole Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cornell, Ken is not on, is he? I don't believe. Dr. Hart?
Aye.
Dr. Schneider?
Aye.
Cheryl Tombley?
Aye.
Judge Bullard? Did we lose? I think we may have lost Susan.
Yeah, she's, she's not here.
And Leah's not here and I vote aye. So motion passes unanimously. And then next meeting date, just a reminder that the meeting scheduled for Monday, November 2nd, has been canceled and that we do have a special meeting Wednesday, November 4th at 4:00. With this, it's a joint meeting with the City Commission. Location is yet to be determined. And that is the end of our agenda.
Dr. Labarda, that, that meeting will be a virtual meeting. So you'll get the login information.
Sorry, I knew that.
That's okay, that's all.
All right, anything else that we need to do before we adjourn? And I believe, having no further business to conduct, we are adjourned. Bye, everybody.